Hello. Hello, everybody. Testing one, two. I'd like to welcome everybody to this evening's Board of Education meeting of May 28, 2024. So, standing as you are able, we would like to do a pledge of allegiance led by Brad Gerby.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
I'm going to immediately hand this over to Superintendent Lott for a very quick recognition.
All right. Thank you, President McVeigh. So, at this point, we'd like to honor both Mateo Idi Apollo and Caroline Clark. Caroline couldn't be here tonight because of a prior commitment, but they have done a fantastic job as student representatives and have really, you've seen, you've held yourselves in high regard in the way you've represented yourself and the students of the district during your time as student reps. We're excited to announce that Mateo will be going to Michigan State University, Go Green, and will be studying finance. And then Caroline is going to the University of Wisconsin-Madison where she'll be studying political science or a possible pre-law track. So, we're very excited for both of them. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to President McVeigh to honor you further.
Well, Mateo, if you could just come around to the front, please.
Can I see a camera back there? What? Yeah.
Jeez, okay.
Mateo, on behalf of the whole board, thank you so much. It was great having you. And any family members out there? And we do also have a commemorative plaque suitable for, it's already framed, not even suitable for a picture. And if the board would like, we would like perhaps to do a quick picture of you with you. And I'm so sad that we can't have Caroline here, but I know, but at least we got Mateo, right?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
And passing over the baton once again to Superintendent Lott.
Okay. Next, we're going to be doing a recognition of the 20, of the Rich Tompkins MHSCA Athlete Award and Scholarship. And as before we do that, though, Mr. Goodman's getting ready to queue up a short presentation that Hornet Nation did, which is our Celine High School program that supports athletics in the district. And so, he's going to be getting that up. And then, what we're going to do is have Coach Debbie Williams-Hoak present what the actual award is. She'll explain what this award is all about. And then, I'm going to read bios on both our incredible student athletes with Peyton Wyden and Jordan Wickham. And then, Coach Debbie's going to come back up to present the actual awards. And then, we'll hear a few words from Peyton and Jordan, and then, we're going to take a picture as well. Okay, Ben, we ready to go?
Two athletes from Celine were awarded Best Senior Multisport Athlete per the Michigan High School Coaches Association earlier this year.
Jordan Wickham and Peyton Wyden mark new ground for Celine. This is the first time where two students from the same school receive both the Boys' and Girls' Award.
These two also received an athletics scholarship for their achievement. Congratulations to Peyton and Jordan.
So, with that said, Coach Debbie Williams-Hoak. And then, press the green.
There we go. Thank you very much, Superintendent Lott and the board, for the opportunity to be here tonight to honor these two very special Celine student athletes. As many of you know, I'm the Boys' and Girls' Coach here at Celine, the Executive Director of the Michigan High School Golf Coaches Association, and the past President of the Michigan High School Coaches Association. Today, I'm representing the 35,000 coaches and athletic directors who are members of the Michigan High School Coaches Association as a member of the Awards Committee to present the Rich Tompkins Multisport Award again to these very special student athletes. The award is named after Rich Tompkins, who was the former Executive Director of the Michigan High School Coaches Association and a longtime coach at Fremont High School, where he built the track and field and cross-country teams into a state powerhouse. Rich himself was a three-sport high school athlete and went on to run track at Michigan State. He had such a passion for life, for athletics, and for coaching. This award, named in his honor, epitomizes what our statewide winners represent. Rich passed away in 2015, but his family wanted to continue his legacy with this award. This award is presented annually to one male and one female in each of the four Michigan High School Athletic Association divisions. The award was created to recognize the accomplishments of student athletes who have participated and excelled in athletics in each season during their four-year high school career, while also excelling in academics, holding leadership roles, and contributing to their schools and communities. The winners of this award prove the research correct. Student athletes who participate in a variety of sports and activities in their high school careers are optimally prepared for successful lives. The minimum requirement to be nominated for this award is that the student athlete have participated in three seasons of sports in all four years of their high school. This will be the last group that was COVID-affected. And for only the first, and for the first time in history, both winners from the same school have been announced, and they're both Celine athletes, and they're both golfers. At this time, Superintendent Lott will read more about them.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie. And I'm going to read bios of both Peyton and Jordan, and they're very long because of their accomplishments. We're going to start with Peyton. It's my pleasure to present to you an exemplary student athlete, Peyton Wyden. Peyton has demonstrated outstanding academic and athletic achievements throughout his high school career. He's maintained an impressive GPA of 3.86. In sports, Peyton has shown remarkable dedication and versatility participating in football, basketball, and golf throughout his four years. In football, he has earned numerous individual honors, including being named a Scholar-Athlete each year, serving as a varsity starter from his junior year, and being recognized as the Team Captain in his senior year. His accolades include the Academic All-State, All-SEC Honorable Mention, Defensive Coaches Award, and Scholar-Athlete Awards. Peyton's basketball achievements are equally impressive. He has been a Scholar-Athlete each year, was the JV Captain in 10th Grade, and has received awards such as the Sixth Man of the Year, Hustle Award, and Coaches Association Team First All-State. In his senior year, he was a varsity starter and captain, earning multiple honors, including the Coaches Association Outstanding Student Athlete Award, SEC Conference Sportsmanship Award, Captain Award, and Scholar-Athlete. In golf, Peyton has been a Scholar-Athlete every year and progressed to a varsity player his junior year. His team accomplishments include being SEC Red Champions in football and basketball, as well as SEC Champs in golf during his senior year. Looking ahead, Peyton plans to attend Michigan State University to study marketing. His impressive record of academic and athletic excellence, combined with his leadership and sportsmanship, makes him a remarkable candidate for success in his future endeavors. Jordan Wickham with a 3.933 impressive GPA and academic honors, Gold Honor Roll, Scholar-Athlete Award, Academic All-State Region. Her individual accomplishments in golf: Consistent performer with four-year varsity record, Regional Qualifier for four years, Academic Award winner for four years, SEC All-Conference Award winner for three years, and Scholar-Athlete for all four years. In gymnastics: Four-year Varsity Letter winner and Team Captain in her senior year, qualified for Regionals all four years and States for all four years, earned All-Region recognition every year, and academic honors throughout her career. In Academic All-State all four years, SCGL All-League all four years, and Academic All-League for two years. In track: Four-year Varsity Athlete and Team Captain in her senior year, earned recognition as top newcomer in her freshman year and MVP award in her sophomore year. Consistent qualifier for Regionals all four years and States all four years, and even completed at Nationals for three years. Notably achieved SEC All-Conference Awards in multiple track events, the 100 meters, 200 meters, 4x100, and 4x200. She further excelled in her senior year by winning the SEC 100-meter Champion Title and Regional 100-meter Champion Title. Team accomplishments in golf include helping the team secure strong finishes in conference championships, including a second-place finish in SEC Red Championship in 2022, and a third-place finish in the SEC Red Division Championship in 2021. She led the team to victory at the Tecumseh Invite in 2023. In gymnastics: Gymnastics team was consistent in the podium at conference and regional levels throughout her career. She achieved second place at the South Central Gymnastics League Championship in 2023, and third-place finishes at the SCGL Championships in 2024, and the Regional Championships in 2024. In track: She was part of a very successful track team, consistently placing in the top three at Regionals, including a second-place finish in 2022, and the SEC Red Championships, including a third-place finish in 2023. Post-high school, Jordan's attending Michigan State University in the fall and will be studying business, and also interested in playing a sport club, or a club sport in college. So, with that said, let's give Jordan a hand. And now, I'd like to invite Coach Debbie back up to the podium along with Peyton and Jordan, so she can present the awards.
On behalf of the Michigan High School Coaches Association, and of course, Celine High School, it's my wonderful pleasure and honor to present you with these very prestigious awards. And also for Jordan, besides her Multisport Award, we also have the opportunity to present her with the Academic All-State Award for golf this year, and also the Academic All-State Team for golf this year as well. So, congratulations. Thank you very much.
And then, Jordan, let's start with you. Can you please just address the group and say a few words, and then Peyton's going to do the same, and then, we're going to go take a picture.
Yes. Thank you, Coach Debbie, for this award. I'm really honored to receive it. I couldn't have been able to do it without the support from my coaches, teammates, and family. So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody who's helped me throughout the way, especially my parents who are here tonight, my coaches, just Celine in general for providing me with the opportunities to have that I have excelled throughout my four years here, and that have shaped me of who I am and that I'm able to succeed at the next level at Michigan State. So, thank you, guys.
Okay, it's picture time.
I would also like to ask Superintendent Lott to add a few more recognitions.
Right. We will continue on with the recognitions. Next, I'd like to introduce the Celine Trap Shooting Team under the direction of Head Coach Susan Duda Osborne. Trap shooting is the safest and fastest-growing sport in America. If you're unfamiliar with the sport, orange targets are thrown at 45 miles per hour from an oscillating machine in any direction. The goal is to hit as many targets as possible in 25 throws. There are 50,000 athletes participating in the USA Clay Target League, and there's never been a reported injury since the league has started. Athletes are required to take a safety course before joining a team, and teams have Range Safety Officers at every practice or event. The mission is in this order: Safety, Marksmanship, and Fun. The Celine Trap Shooting Team started in 2018 with nine athletes. Seven had no shooting experience. Over the last six years, the team has grown to 48 athletes that won the USA High School Clay Target League State Championship in 2023. Let's give them a hand. Next month, this team will be competing to win back-to-back state championships. The five team members that represented Celine at the 2023 State Championship were Senior Ian Lichtenstein, Junior Morgan Heisel, Junior William Rogers, Senior Gavin Mail, and Sophomore Nathan Dumniky. What makes the Celine Trap Shooting Team a powerhouse in Michigan is the depth of talent on the team. We have 26 athletes that have earned their varsity letter this year, which averaging more than 21 average. Three of them are still in middle school and cannot earn their varsity letter. We have 11 athletes that average 23 or higher, qualifying them to compete at the highest tier at the National Championship in this July. Our 2024 regular season just finished, and we have these athletes with the highest individual averages representing Celine at the National Championship Team Event in July. Junior Henry Schneider, Junior Morgan Heisel, eighth grader McKenna Heisel, freshman Jacob White, Senior John Callahan. Congratulations on winning the state championship in 2023, and good luck next month defending the state championship title. Okay. And the next part is, we'd like Coach Osborne to come first and say hello, introduce yourself, and then, we're just going to follow. Everybody's going to go through in the microphone, introduce yourself, and state what your role is on the team. We're going to do every, every person here. Okay?
Let's do this. I'd like the senior and the one that represents the state championship team to come up here first. So, if you were 2023, Ian, Will, Morgan, John, get up here. Jacob White, get in line. And now, the ones that you represented. Where's Henry Schneider? Come up here.
Good evening. Thank you very much for recognizing our team. This is how it really got started. My son actually was a shooter on the Manchester team. And what ended up happening is, he said to me, because he's a little bit of a different kid, you know, trap shooting's a little bit of a different kid, generally speaking, he said, "Mom, I always wanted to earn my varsity letter from Celine, and they don't have a team." Well, I'm a coach and a teacher, so I said, "Let's start a team, kid." And so, that was the first year in 2018 that we started the team, and it, it really, really grew when I opened it up to the middle schoolers, which I want to say was in 2021? I thought maybe five or six kids from the middle school, because this is actually a six-through-12 organization. And when we opened it up, I'm thinking, oh, five or six. There was 25. So, it went from having 25 on the team, which we are locked in at that. That's all we can have. That's all they can have on a field. And then, it jumped to 50. And right now, we're carrying 48 kids. So, when we say the depth of talent on the team, it's, it's true. I mean, we have some real powerhouses on the team. And you may have noticed when you were listening to our bio that many of these are not seniors. One's an eighth grader. So, I can't wait to introduce you to these guys. Come on up. And by the way, I'm the Head Coach Susan Duda Osborne. Thank you.
Okay. So, what we're going to do is actually, yep, we'll start here, but we're going to have everybody introduce themselves and then, go meet over in front of the Board of Education table over there, because we're eventually going to do a big picture.
And, and not too many gaps, right? Just like, we're just moving, we're just moving.
William Rogers on the 2023 State Champion Squad.
Morgan Heisel on the 2023 State Championship Squad and representing at Nationals.
John Callahan, I'm top five on the team.
Ian Lichtenstein on the 2023 State Champion Squad.
Jacob White on the 2024 State Champion Squad.
Henry Schneider, I'm currently leading the team in highest score, and I'm going to Nationals.
McKenna Heisel, and I'm going to the National Squad.
I'm Trevor Lantis. I'm one of the two captains on the team. I'm a senior.
Sam Herbach, four-year member.
Tommy Allman, two-year member.
Anika King, junior member, about four years.
I'm Chris Carroll. This is my first year. I'm a junior.
I'm Kyle Zion. This is my first year.
I'm Evan Seer. This is my third year.
I'm John Renee, and this is my fourth year.
I'm Ethan Genesek, and this is my second year on the team.
Hi, I'm Ryan Felkamp. This is my fourth year on the team.
I'm Drew DeCaro. This is my third year on the team.
I'm Greta Schneider. This is my third year on the team.
I'm Madison Dumniky. This is my third year on the team.
I'm Johnny Idi Apollo, and I've been on the team for three years.
I'm Jax Presley. I've been on the team for a year.
I'm Nicholas Tokarski. Been on the team four years, I think.
I'm Devon Swiss. I've been on the team two years.
I'm Vadim Marshall. This is my first year.
I'm Justin Renee. This is my first year.
John DeCaro, I'm one of the coaches.
Kevin Dumniky, one of the coaches.
Brian Heisel, one of the coaches, biggest cheerleader.
Dana Heisel, one of the coaches.
Susan King, one of the coaches.
John Renee, one of the coaches and Range Safety Officer.
Okay, let's try to figure this out. Okay, Jackie. Now, there's only, there's only 35 of you or so, so you might want to squish in a little bit. Jackie might need a panel on this. So, when we say the depth of talent on the team, it's true. I mean, we have some real powerhouses on the team. And you may have noticed when you were listening to our bio that many of these are not seniors. One's an eighth grader. So, I can't wait to introduce you to these guys. Come on up. And by the way, I'm the head coach Susan Duda Osborne. Thank you.
Okay. So, what we're gonna do is actually, yep, we'll start here, but we're gonna have everybody introduce themselves and then go meet over in front of the Board of Education table over there, because we're eventually gonna do a big picture. Go ahead.
And not too many gaps, right? Just like, we're just moving.
William Rogers on the 2023 State Champion Squad.
Morgan Heisel on the 2023 State Championship Squad and representing at Nationals.
John Callahan, I'm top five on the team.
Ian Lichtenstein on the 2023 State Champions Squad.
Jacob White on the 2024 State Champions Squad.
Henry Schneider, I'm currently leading the team in highest score, and I'm going to Nationals.
McKenna Heisel, and I'm going to the National Squad.
I'm Trevor Lantis. I'm one of the two captains on the team.
I'm a senior.
Sam Herbach, four-year member.
Tommy Allman, two-year member.
Annika King, junior member, about four years.
I'm Chris Carroll. This is my first year. I'm a junior.
I'm Kyle Zion. This is my first year.
I'm Evan Seer. This is my third year.
I'm John Renee, and this is my fourth year.
I'm Ethan Genesek, and this is my second year on the team.
Hi, I'm Ryan Felkamp. This is my fourth year on the team.
I'm Drew DeCaro. This is my third year on the team.
I'm Greta Schneider. This is my third year on the team.
I'm Addison Dumicki. This is my third year on the team.
I'm Johnny Adapolo, and I've been on the team for three years.
I'm Jax Presley. I've been on the team for a year.
I'm Nicholas Tokarski. Been on the team four years, I think.
I'm Devon Swiss. I've been on the team two years.
I'm Vadim Marshall. This is my first year.
I'm Justin Renee. This is my first year.
John DeCaro, I'm one of the coaches.
Kevin Dumicki, one of the coaches.
Brian Heisel, one of the coaches, biggest cheerleader.
Dana Heisel, one of the coaches.
Susan King, one of the coaches.
John Renee, one of the coaches and range safety officer.
Let's try to figure this out. Okay, Jackie.
Now, there's only 35 of you or so, so you might want to squish in a little bit.
I'll take a picture for you.
Okay. I would like to introduce the next very important group, in this case, a team, under the direction of head coach LeAnn Rehn and assistant coach Sam Hotop. I'd like to introduce some of the important highlights from the girls varsity basketball team. With multiple SEC Red Championships, multiple district titles, multiple regional final appearances. This season, the team made 192 three-pointers, the 11th most in the history of the state of Michigan of any school and any class ever. This season, made 14 three-pointers in a single game. This is top 25 in the history of the state of Michigan. This season, the team finished eighth in the entire state in three-point percentage at 33% and the top 10 shooting teams in Michigan. In the four years that our current seniors have been in our program, we've won multiple conference championships, district championships, and made multiple regional final appearances. This group has contributed to some of the best teams in the history of Celine. Their teams hold the all-time Celine team records for scoring steals, assists, three-point shooting, and wins. But the biggest point of pride in our program is our culture. Our program is founded on three core values: fiercely united, intentionally inspired, and gratitude. We believe that culture isn't built in a day. It's built every day, and thus, we invest a ton of time into developing strong relationships, deliberate inspiration in life, and appreciating the joys of the moment. It is our culture that sets us apart from other programs around this state. These women have bought in, invested in, and lead our culture on a daily basis. They have built something truly special. We invest in growing as people as much as we do as players. As a result, the unity within the program has lifted us to great heights. These women have shown what it looks like to be strong, independent women that are connected to others, are full of gratitude, and inspire the world around them. Those qualities in our athletes will last in us forever. It's that feeling we will remember long past the days that we remember how many wins and losses we had. As we say, it's all about the ships, relationships. As a coach, I can have a vision of the culture I would like to have, but there is no way it comes to fruition without the support and leadership of the families and athletes. I am in awe of the way these athletes have developed our culture. They are the drivers of our culture. With that said, Coach Rehn, Coach Hotop, and the players, let's all come up, introduce yourselves, and then we will take a picture as well. So, come on up.
LeAnn Rehn, I'm the varsity coach for Celine Girls Basketball. And before I have our amazing assistant coach and these athletes introduce themselves, seven years ago, when I started, I started with a crazy vision, going into an athletic interview in front of parents and players and saying, "Hey, what if we make it about culture first? What if we are culture first and make every day and every moment about that?" And that vision, that dream doesn't happen unless I have amazing parents behind us and these young women that drive the culture. Culture doesn't work in a program if it's all coach-led. It has to be player-led. And these young women behind me, like, it's my honor that I got to witness what they have built. I had a vision. They're the ones that did the work. And so, it's just truly a pleasure and an honor to be the varsity coach here, and I appreciate the administration for giving me a shot at this and these players for buying in. They're absolutely the most incredible women in the world. I always tell them, one of the greatest things in life is playing the greatest game on earth with the greatest people on earth. And that's what I get to do as a coach, because I get to be with them.
I'm Hadley Griffith, and I'm a senior.
I'm Kate Stemmer, and I'm a senior.
I'm Abby Zenick, and I'm a junior.
And I'm Sam Hotop, assistant coach.
So, each year, our school board members, you see up here and all across the state, and actually, all across the county and all across the state, 850 school districts, we're invited to take courses through the Michigan Association of School Boards, M A S B. And at the end of each year, they tally up the points, and occasionally, we receive pins and bits of tin and fun recognitions. Tonight, I'd like to recognize our very own Lauren Gold, who has earned her Certified Board Member Award. And take a piece of, take your. Congratulations, Lauren. It's also my honor to introduce pending board approval this evening in the consent agenda, two new hires. And I'd like to begin with Carol Digglio, Carol Bach Digglio, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, who will begin officially on June 1st. And please, make your way to the podium.
Hi, everyone. This is my second time to the mic, so I just want to say I'm really excited that this is gonna be my home. And I had fantastic six months as an interim, and I'm glad that I'm gonna be here permanently for a while. So, thank you so much for the opportunity. And I told the folks in my final interview that it's really about the people, not necessarily the place. And this district checks both boxes. It's such a wonderful place, and it is all about the people. So, I'm super excited to be here for a while. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to call up to the podium, and you can start slowly working your way up there now, Julie Volker, who will be our new executive director of special education. Apparently, you had an in in the hiring process.
I guess so. I guess so. Thank you, everyone. My name is Julie Volker, and I'm very excited to be joining Celine Schools. I currently work for the Wasna ISD, and I've been there for eight years as a program leader and also a countywide leader for many of our initiatives and our supports that we've offered to the local districts. Over the years, I've had the very unique and amazing opportunity to work with the Celine Special Ed Department between Kevin and Monica and the staff. We've worked around students, and students that were coming to the WISD or moving back into Celine. And I've always just been in awe of the dedication and the skill sets of the team that's here. So, I'm very excited to become part of that team, and I bring my skills and lead with Monica for the next year. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Very nice to talk to you. Board Secretary Yonkey, are there any public comments for the first section? There are no public comments for the first section. Thank you very much. I will not have a response to previous public comment as there was no previous public comment or a comment at the previous meeting. We're at the revisions, approval of the agenda. Items can be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moves, Deben.
Thank you.
Support, Eastep.
Support, Eastep. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
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 I hear 7-0. Thank you so much. I'm gonna pass this over now to Mateo. Is your last official role as our student representative? And by the way, we weren't sure how having two student representatives would do this year, and we were so delighted. You worked as an excellent team. Thanks once again. I appreciate it.
For our student showcase today, we have peer-to-peer with presenters Lilena McDonald, Charlie Van Haften, Bella Rodriguez, and they are advised by Riss Wilworth.
And Dr. Jason Science, to be loved.
Hi, my name's Charlie Van Haften. I'm here with Bella Rodriguez. The reason we're presenting is our whole club is about making a campaign to raise awareness about mental health and what we do. And we think that we share a lot with the students, but it'd be great to share with the school board and the parents as well. So, first, we're gonna go through who we are as a club and what we do. So, we're a club partnered with the University of Michigan and the Eisenberg Family Depression Center. So, they give us a budget every year, and our goal is to make a campaign in our school to raise awareness about mental health, what it is, how to deal with it, how to help somebody who's going through mental health struggles and reduce the stigma around that. We're gonna go through this year's campaign and what we're doing this year. So, a big thing was, as we're doing today, is educating people on it. So, we went through, had a segment on SHS Today, which is our school news channel, and talking about what our club is and a little bit about mental health. We did surveys at the beginning of the year and the end of the year to see how successful our campaign was and how much people learned about mental health. And we are planning on doing a mural on one of the walls in the high school. We did that years before. I don't think neither of us were in the club, and we liked that, so we wanted to do it again. So, that's the mural. We worked with the Advanced Graphics Students at Celine High School. The words on the bottom say "Grow Through What You Go Through", which is our slogan last year that we thought worked better with our idea. And the handprints are gonna be from each one of the people in our club to just kind of leave our mark, is what we wanted. And we think it'd send a good message and get our message out there.
So, I'm Bella, and it's kind of sad Lilena got sick today. So, she's not here, but she did, in our whole chapter, did a piece of this presentation. But I'm just gonna talk to you a little bit more about the facts and the statistics of mental health. So, there's 32%. Sorry. No, you're all good. So, there's 32% of 13- through 18-year-olds do have diagnosable anxiety, and only 37% of these kids actually receive treatment, which is really saddening, because these mental health struggles are very real and can impact you in serious ways. And then, 15% of adolescents have major depressive episodes, and this was in 2018 to 2019. So, some of the factors that may influence mental health or mental health disorders are genetics, your family environment, your peer relationships, socioeconomic factors, as well as any kind of substance abuse, technology use, lack of support services, which is kind of what we're here for, and then, lack of sleep or healthy foods. So, these are just, I'm not gonna read everyone to you, but these are just some of the mental health conditions, some of the symptoms, and some of the treatments. A big piece of why we're here today is to mostly speak to a lot of the parents and to know the signs and to know what to do when you do see these in your kids, so you can catch it as early as possible and try to get some treatment for them. So, anxiety disorders, depression, bipolar, and eating disorders are all serious disorders that affect a large piece of our community here at Celine and all over the world. These are just some of the strategies that we recommend and also many doctors recommend as well. So, making sure you have adequate sleep and gaming and hobbies is incredibly important, more important than you think. Mindfulness and meditation has become a thing, as of the past couple of years, really big on how that can impact you and your mind, even physiologically. And then, technology detox, which nobody wants to hear, ever. But that can make a huge difference in your mental health. Just connecting with others, getting out, and that can be huge, especially for depression. And then, learning to set boundaries with your people, your bosses, your friends, school, et cetera, and with yourself can all be really helpful. So, some of the input from our chapter, as well as other teenagers. So, some suggestions just to our parents are to just make talking about this normal. I know it's kind of, it's very stigmatized, and it can be an awkward conversation to have, but making it normal. Educating yourself so that you can understand it and see the signs, know the signs. Model healthy coping mechanisms. You know, you hear, like, "Do as I say, not as I do." But it's important that you set realistic expectations and also model those behaviors as well, because that's where a lot of kids end up with substance abuse issues. So, just modeling those healthy coping mechanisms for your children. And then, also just encouraging them to join in a mental health club, just like we are, peer-to-peer or mental wellness. There's a lot of different opportunities for them to either join to make a difference in our culture here at Celine or for themselves to seek help and get those resources that they need. And then, just educating your kids on the resources and strategies that are available to treat mental health disorders. So, moving forward, our suggestions include implementing more mental health education in schools, as well as establishing regular mental health screenings and check-ins, which I understand can be difficult. And that was a big piece of our surveys in the beginning and the end of the year to kind of grasp the mental state of the students here at Celine. And then, also increase the access to mental health resources and also make it more widely known. I know that we've had a couple introductions to new counselors and social workers and stuff. So, just increasing access to that. And then, also just involving parents, guardians, and families in this process as well can make it a little bit easier. So, thank you.
Don't go too far. We may have Bella, Charlie, we may have a question or two for you from the board, a gentle question or two. Anyone, go ahead, Jennifer.
So, first of all, go blue. How did you, one of my friends is the director of the Eisenberg Family Depression Center at the University of Michigan. Dr. Cross, do you know him, Ethan?
I do not.
You don't? How did you get involved with that organization and bringing it to Celine? Because it's a wonderful resource on campus.
Yeah. So, this has been quite a, yeah, quite a few years. So, we weren't directly involved in that. But it has been an incredible resource to be partnered with them, and they've given us a lot of opportunities to make it more widely known throughout Celine.
Yeah. And the all-peer-to-peer, there's peer-to-peer in like many different schools. So, at the beginning of the year, there's like an education conference of all the people in peer-to-peer, so we can be educated on it for any new members. So, all-peer-to-piers, so different schools are all involved at the Eisenhower Family Depression Center. So, it's not just us. Oh, yeah. There's also the beginning of the educate us on it and the end of the year. With a bunch of different schools, we share out what each school's campaign was and kind of have an end-of-the-year celebration.
Brad, groupie.
All right. Well, real quickly, first of all, I want to acknowledge your message about how important it is that we do talk about mental health and wellness. And you'd be surprised that people you think that aren't struggling be surprised that people you think that aren't struggling with things are struggling with things, and they just need some mechanism and some means to express it, to talk about it, to normalize it, all of that. So, I want to applaud you for being leaders in that work, okay? You know, I always ask this of every group that comes to visit us, and how can we help you? What can we do to support your mission, support your message, all of it?
Yeah, so basically, that slide about kind of moving forward a little bit and just on sort of supporting not just our club, but we have probably three or four that are based on mental health or mental wellness, just giving us those, you guys do an amazing job already, but like those opportunities and supporting us and obviously, social media is a huge thing, so heavy on that. Yeah.
One of the things that I've talked to like incoming high school students a little bit about, and now I would love to add, add your club also, but like there are some classes who can support the development of some of these resources and skills and strategies for students, like for example, Learning to Breathe. It's kind of a, the title of the course doesn't necessarily say all that it entails, but I think that course along with, I'm sure, others in your club and others, it's an opportunity for students to develop some skills and strategies for some really big things that are impacting their lives in an environment that's more close-knit than maybe after high school. So, you have teachers who are checking in on you daily. That's a little different at a larger university or maybe employment post-high school. So, how are you, and I think the partnership with Michigan potentially could help with this, but how are you partnering with students and maybe the University of Michigan partnership to support them as they transition out of high school and into that next level?
Yeah, so we've done a couple different programs as well as last year. I know we did a couple different things, but last year, we did the, what did we call them? The boxes.
Oh, it was like question boxes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, basically, we have like a question and then there's a box and you can put anonymous responses in there. And then, we have an Instagram page, which is Celine Peer-to-Peer, if you want to go look at that. And that's where we kind of answered as many of those questions as we could. So, you can ask questions without any sort of guilt or shame attached to that, because obviously, we do talk about how stigmatized it is. So, we have that resource, which is really, really heavy on that being anonymous place. And there, we can answer any questions. We can provide, we have an entire link. We have a link tree in our bio that has every single resource you can find, people you can talk to. And then, obviously, we make ourselves pretty well-known in the beginning of the year when we go to give our surveys and just so that people know that they can feel comfortable to come talk to us.
I think just even starting the conversation and just bringing that awareness and, like you said, de-stigmatizing some of that is really important and helpful. Thank you.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for all the stuff you guys do as the clubs, because I've seen like a lot, because Caroline's a part of the Mental Wellness Club and she talks about it a ton, and that's amazing how you guys are bringing more awareness to mental health and helping a ton of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I had a couple of questions, but thank you for creating this club and having that support out there for your peers. It's super important, and I'm glad, I mean, I feel like it's being talked about more, maybe over the past few years even, to be able to talk about it and, you know, the de-stigmatizing. So, if, so with the students, are they referred to you or can you explain kind of that process with them, knowing that you're available?
Yeah, so, obviously, we make ourselves pretty, like I said, pretty well-known in the beginning of the year. We have like presentations during hornet time. So, during those presentations, we explain who we are, we explain what we do, we explain other resources, and then obviously, we give those surveys. So, at kind of any, and we pop up probably like once a month, a couple times a month, maybe roughly around that time to kind of say hi, this is who we are, we're still here, if you need help, if you need resources, if you need a recommendation for something. Yeah, so through our various activities, those students know that we're kind of a safe place and safe place. And then, along with that, social media being such a big thing for our generation, people like to use that a lot as kind of a way to reach out to us without, with it being more anonymous.
So, our wellness committee, who is ran by Principal Denise, I know they've done surveys in the past as far as can students identify a support person, right? Is there some, like one person that they know that they can go to? I don't remember the results, so I'm not even going to try, but, you know, I don't know if you've, I think it would be good, and maybe I'll reach out to Principal Denise, to, you know, reach out to you all, maybe get some feedback on that. I think that would be super important. And yeah, thank you all for what you do. I hope you expand or there are more supports that are put in place, and thank you for advocating.
Well, thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Bella. I appreciate it. Thank you. Well done. We have two action items this evening. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2023-2024 SAS Tech Copiers Bid Award to Printer Source Plus in the amount of $726,177.44, as submitted by Jay Grossman, Director of Technology.
Support, Miller.
Thank you.
Motion, Miller, not support, sorry.
Motion, Miller, thank you. You can, you can support in advance if somebody... Was that Tim? Thank you. Mr. Grossman, you know we're going to have questions, or perhaps you have something to tell us about how cool these Epson printers actually are?
How long do you have? So, yeah, eight years ago, we, in our last bond, we ordered our copy fleet from our last, last time around. So, they usually have a shelf life of about five years on them. We've gotten more than our use out of it. It is part of the scope of this bond in this series to replace the whole fleet. We're going to look to get that all done between this summer and the end of next to replace all the copy machines. The fun part is, we are moving from, as alluded to, we're going to Epsons, which are now Inkjet instead of toner. The difference being that they are cooler, they don't require all the heat that it will take, the energy to heat them up and put the copies onto the paper. So, we're hoping to have some energy savings, enjoy some cost savings on it. Yeah, they're really neat.
Yeah, I could, I bet you earlier this evening, you were quite excited about them. So, I do have a quick question. So, when it comes to service, you know, there's always a breakdown. Do we have in-house service, or do we still have to pick up a phone and call somebody for?
Good question. So, part of the contract that we're getting will have them provide five years of service without anything, without even having to call anything. There's just a QR code that we'll be able to scan and we'll open a support ticket, and they'll be able to respond within 30 minutes and a four-hour time window to come out and service things, so.
Did our previous printers have anything like that?
They did have support. It was a phone number we'd call for the first five years, and they have been great coming out and supporting our printers while we've been with them. These new ones will be guaranteed to have support, that they'll come out for 10 years to support these. So, it'll take us all the way through this, the rest of this bond.
Thank you. Anyone else on the table? Oh, Dr. Gold?
So, 10 years, but they only last five to seven, right? Maybe. Who knows?
The Canon copiers were guaranteed for five years. The Epson brand that we're getting are supportive manufacturer support for seven years. So, that'll take us through most of it. And then, the company itself will actually come out and still physically, they'll have parts and work on them and service them for us for up to 10 years.
I was kind of shocked by that. Like, I went looking like, why do we need new ones? But actually, that is what the industry standard is. But that brings me my question, and you may not know this, but I'm just curious. It said that the company, as part of the bid, takes care of recycling these responsibly. I just have this vision of all of these. Do you know anything about that process? Like, getting rid of all the old ones and having them end up in a landfill? I mean, they don't, because it says that they recycle them, but...
Yeah, so they have them bit broken down, they get taken to recyclers to take the actual, the metals out of the parts of them, and salvage as many of the pieces that we can. A lot of these, because the parts still work, they get sold to other companies so they can be used to service other ones.
Okay. This makes me sad every time I buy like a new washer and dryer or fridge or something. I just get really nervous about it.
We'll also say for responsibility that part of this does come with a recycling program. So, when we have like used Inkjet cartridges, they will collect them and recycle those so we can reuse those as well. So, they won't be putting all this stuff into landfills.
Great. Thank you.
I know we've heard it from others at the table, but we appreciate that you're being such a good steward in that respect. Brad?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on that message about stewardship. He's being too humble and saying about the energy efficiency. You're talking about our current ones. You stated here, 1,800 watts is our current copier fleet, and it's a reduction all the way down to 180 watts. So, I mean, this is a 90% reduction we're talking about here, which I find to be significant, and I appreciate it. The other thing I want you to know that I really appreciate about this bid and about your intentionality with it was the idea of us trying to get to two models for the whole district so that you don't go upstairs and it's one copier, you go downstairs and it's another one with a passcode and all kinds of differences. I could tell you, as an educator, that continuity is really valued. So, anyway, so thank you for being inventive about that.
There is a sneaky double purpose with that in that as we have some machines that get a lot more use than others, as we get to ones that have four million copies versus the same model that might only have 100,000 copies on it, we can get a lot more life if we, if we switch some of those around and balance that out a little bit. So, to have two machines, a color and a black and white machine, make that a lot more attainable for us and make them last closer to that 10 years.
I do remember that 25 years ago, we were told that paper would be dead. So, no comment needed. Thank you. Jennifer, Jenny?
I just, when I was looking through the packet, I was looking at the bids, and, you know, we always go to the total proposed cost, like that's what we go to first. And so then, it made me dig a little deeper, because this bid was about $30,000 more than the one below it, but also more than the one below that. So, then, as I was digging, it really stood out that the energy efficiency is where we're really at, and the warranty also. So, the manufacturer warranty being two years longer and the less expensive printer being power usage of 18 watts and this power usage of 180 watts. That's incredible, the difference there. I will say though, that the students really love when the hot papers come out and they feel warm.
These are, these are cold. I have felt them in other districts. They print out a 160-page document, and it was cold to the touch. I do want to also just mention, as you may notice in that bid package, there were three extra copiers bid on this one, which are actually going to end up being removed from the other. So, that's why there's also a discrepancy when we look copier to copier, it becomes a lot more...
I mean, I was just, from an energy standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, from a cost savings, looking at the wattage difference was just a huge difference. Yeah, thank you.
Very exciting, very exciting.
Thanks.
Well, here you know more comments. I'd like to put this to a vote. Please, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much, seven zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Grossman. I think we're, I'd also like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of two vans for the Liberty Club, one from Mark Motz Ford Incorporated in the amount of $59,635, and the second one from Gene But, I hope I pronounce it right, Butman Ford, at the amount of $56,328.28, as submitted by Brian Puffer, Director of Community Education. But I will hand this over to Dr. Lottch. Well, first of all, can we have a motion?
Motion, Gerby.
Gerby?
Support, Miller.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up from Brian Puffer, that the Liberty Club's paying for the vans from their fundraising account and the CARES grant, and they did go through the bidding process. Wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, queries, quibbles? Nope, okay. Thank you. I'd like to put this to a vote then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you very much for the two vans. We have one scheduled report this evening, the District Strategic Council summary, and Dr. Lottch will be kicking that off as soon as he puts on his clicker hat.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I do want to thank everybody who participated in this process. We had a wonderful show of support from our community and staff, and I really felt that the process of the Strategic Council was very productive. Specifically, I want to thank Jackie Martin and Cara Davis, who really did lead the design of the meetings and helping to bring the result to fruition tonight, which I'm happy to present. Next slide, please, Ben. So, when we look at what was the purpose of the District Strategic Council, we looked at these areas, the vision, mission, and the Celine Area Schools' compass, and we're considering, well, how do we move the district forward in that light? Who was, who was on the Strategic Council? Volunteers who represent diverse stakeholders from the community. We also had students. I should, I should have mentioned that. We had some wonderful student representatives and various district departments. And this was to be thought partners to better support our district continuous improvement leadership team, which is primarily led by Cara Davis and the Teaching and Learning Team. We can go to the next slide. In terms of expectations and norms, we did go over specifically what we thought was important that everybody who participated would know, and that is, we wanted active participation, and we got that, that people were attending the meetings. It wasn't that they were taking, coming to some meetings and not coming to others. And that's important, because we needed continuity. In addition, we wanted them providing input based on their perspective, a perspective as a community member, a perspective as a student, perspective as a current staff member. And then, we were going to use data within and outside the Celine Area Schools as a resource, and that we were going to follow through on assigned tasks and communicate information as requested. So, for example, after a meeting were to happen, representatives might ask us questions that we needed to go back and research for the next meeting. And then, finally, we'd use the Bridge to Civility as a framework for any difficult conversations. Okay, next slide. So, then, we looked at what shifts could be made to build upon the strengths of existing district programming in order to best serve the students and help maintain fiscal responsibility. And then, we divided up into four focal areas. They were early childhood and elementary, so we had a group working in that range. Then, we had a middle grades group. We had a high school group, and we had an activities group with athletics clubs. We also had Lori Dawson participating, for example, to help in that area. And the charge was to go through the following bullet points. We're going to gather facts, identify successes, discuss change proposals, consider opportunities for revenue generation and/or cost savings, and consider special populations, and consider mental health, safety, and security. So, we were working under that umbrella with our charge. Next slide, Ben. And then, in terms of the timeline, and I feel like we did a good job of sticking to this. We, we set the expectations in December, then we went through a series of meetings, January through March, led to a full group discussion in April 24th. And when I say the, the series of meetings, that's when we were dividing up into groups, working on those specific four areas. And then, now, we are here to summarize the work to the Board of Education. In terms of how we thought about this, it's more of the design thinking cycle. And so, that was to discover, reframe opportunities, incubate, ideate, and illuminate, evaluate, refine ideas, test ideas, and then deliver, and then take it to scale. So, our thought process was around that. Next slide. I'm not going to go over all of these specific bullet points here, but the early childhood and elementary group identified a series of successes that are currently going on within our programming, and then identified some focus areas. And then, that leads to the next slide, Ben, that I am going to focus a little more time on. And that is, we tasked the groups to come up with two to three, what we'll call change proposals, ideas that we could implement in the district that may better support, in this case, early childhood at our elementary level. And when we say early childhood, we're talking about pre-K to third grade. So, the first one was, one and three actually tie together. first one was, one and three actually tie together fairly well. Direct advertising and outreach, and then uh, value-based marketing, why come to Selen Area Schools for early childhood? So, we we had agreed as a group that there could be more strategy placed on marketing families to know what kinds of services we provide, that not everybody knows that we have a strong early childhood special education program, or what does Pooh Coroner have to offer through community education, along with our our private daycare and Little Star. So there were, there were, there was a thought process there that we are going to work closely with Jackie in this case, to better market uh, and and talk about the wonderful services and supports that kids can get from the Selen Area Schools, to try to get um, families to be be considering a move to the Selen Area Schools. The sec- oh, uh, Ben, back up just a sec there. The the second one's very important. Um, and that's this feasibility study for early childhood. I'm going to go into a little more depth with this. So, there's a proposal out there from Governor Whitmer that would um, release uh, GSRP, Great Start Readiness Program funds, so that all kids in Michigan would be able to qualify for that. Now, we're not at that point now. Right now, GSRP is um, parents and families would meet a certain poverty level, so to speak, to be able to be eligible. But there is a proposal out there that would allow the potential for all four-year-olds to more or less come to public schools and have that funded. So we we need to dive in to this, and we have been looking at this in in great depth. Over on the right side column, it says capacity N. That means we're not ready yet to do this, but we're looking into it. And what that's involved is, where would we have the public area um, for for people to gather? How do we develop consistent curriculum? And where do all the students go? So in essence, a big question for us is, if we had an influx of, let's just say, a hundred and fifty students that were eligible to come to school next year or in a future year, where would we put all the students? And so what we're currently doing is looking at, where could students be housed, in which building? Would that be Liberty? Would that be a dedicated early childhood um, building that would specifically house all these students? And and really, more or less, where would everybody go? So we are currently looking at that. Okay, uh, next slide, Ben. At the middle grades level, again, we identified a series of successes and also identified some focus areas, areas, which again, I wasn't going to get into depth here with with those, since all of you have the presentation, you can look at that in greater depth. But I do want to talk about the the next slide, Ben, that talks about the two to three top change proposals that the Strategic Council subgroup was recommending. The first one is exploratory classes at the middle school level partnering with Southwest Washington Consortium. There's been a lot of discussion how um, career tech ed is is very popular now and is needed, and that we have so many students participating at the high school level. What's a better way at the middle school level to get students exposed to those types of courses? And so that is an area that we are exploring. The second one is a summer academy, to better help kids either catch up, accelerate, and and possibly expand credit into the high school. That we we feel like we can develop that further, and that's an area we should explore. And the final area to look at is this transition issue that we that we do have. And I say issue because we transition kids more often when you have a smaller configuration of grades together. That there are some districts that have K through eight schools, for example. Well, they don't have as many transitions. Here, we have a series of transitions that it's hard to make transitions, whether it's from, you know, you're leaving the K through three environment to the heritage environment at four or five, and then the middle school transition coming in and out is challenging. And so we're discussing the way to, can we think longer term about transitions, um, making sure the students don't fall through the cracks? We've had a lot of question, a lot of discussion about those kids that are are doing fine, that may not be on the um, radar of of our staff. But how do we make sure we're really supporting all the students and their transition? Uh, and then also making sure that we have clear clearer transitions and so forth. And then there was talk about, would there be a K four, five, eight? Um, we didn't dive too far into that possibility because that would involve grade reconfiguration at the at the actual buildings, and we're not um, ready to move forward with that. Okay, if we go to the next one, thank you, Ben. So again, then this is the high school group, identified successes and strengths, and then focus areas and opportunities. And then the next slide, Ben. Uh, the the possible top two to three change proposals. The first one is every SHS student earns a half a credit for an internship experience as a graduation requirement. And we've been studying this over the last few years, and you know, for example, I brought back that when I was out at a conference in San Diego, they have a specific school that does two days of internship and three days in person at at their high school. It's a public school. And and you know, we really would like to explore that, especially for our students in their senior year, to say, what's a meaningful internship that every student could have? And there'd be lots of different ways to earn that half credit. So we're exploring that. The second one is Liberty Club expansion. There is a waitlist right now here in this building at Liberty um, to expand the Liberty Club. And so working with Director Puffer to determine, hey, is there space? We feel that there is. And what type of remodeling would that take in order to bring in that expansion, which would be significant revenue enhancement for the community ed department as well. And the third thing, and again, this is one, it says virtual academy, and on the right side, uh, where it says capacity and fit, there's an N there right now. It's not because we don't think this is possible, it's because we have to explore more of what this would look like. But the discussion is, could we offer a virtual academy that would be revenue generating? And if we did, we'd have to look at what staffing would look like. Um, would it be blended model? And then would we be expanding the alternative high school to operate in this mode? Because right now, the alternative high school operates with a lot of virtual classes through edgenuity, but with this virtual academy, would that also be an option for some of the um, alternative high school student students who currently come in person to do their work? So this would be an area that we would explore. And then we go to the next slide. Uh, again, this is our final group, our final subgroup, activities, athletics, and clubs. And we looked at identified successes and focus areas. And then the next slide, Ben, these were the top two to three change proposals. So the first one was extracurricular foundation. What's the purpose of the club? What are standards of the club? That there are so many clubs and organizations, which is a good thing, but that we have to put some um, you know, focus questions around them so that we can better help manage and support them and make sure that, you know, student voice is heard here. Uh, the next area, uh, facility signage, facility naming, corporate sponsors. We do talk about that. We have new spaces coming at the high school and steam and athletic weight room. What and and then we've had conversations about, you know, what does that look like at Hornet Stadium? And and expanding this has some opportunity here uh, with revenue generation as well. And then you look at the third one, leveraging facilities. We do have strong rentals and and there are lots of people who want to use our facilities. Uh, specifically, I remember Rebecca Greb Driscoll talking to me about, because we stayed open with our facility rentals, especially the auditorium at the high school, we've now captured a significant market that was not there before COVID, and we've maintained that. So is there opportunity here to leverage our facilities even further to um, you know, generate more revenue? And then finally, the promotion of extracurriculars earlier to fifth and eighth grade. Yes, we have some extracurricular clubs and organization fairs that happen, you know, at the high school, but we want to get kids to know what the opportunities are earlier so that they would uh, have better opportunities or have more knowledge about the opportunities they have. Okay, uh, next slide. And so we did seek some participant feedback at the end to get some uh, what what our participants were saying. And here's just a few of the comments. I'll just read one of them. "I found the process to be very focused, the ability to dive into topics by specialized areas added adept to our conversation that allowed teams to drill down to real action items. I feel confident that even if every idea is not feasible, a real dedication to understanding the needs of the district and effort to satisfy those demands is being made." And I think that sums up a number of the comments. Okay, next slide, Ben. And that's it. So uh, I will, some next steps though. Uh, we're going to be relaunching this full-scale council in twenty-four, twenty-five to revisit in particular our Selen Area Schools compass and the existing strategic goals. And that process being led by Director of Teaching and Learning Cara Davis. So with that said, what questions can I answer?
I'm sure quite a few questions from the table.
I'll go. Um, okay, so I don't have a lot of questions, but I do um, appreciate all the time that you guys all put into all this. And um, the internship experience, I really liked that idea. Um, and looking more into the internship, I think the consortium program is just amazing program that we have here and um, gives the kids a lot of opportunities when they leave school. So um, if they can start doing some internships and gain credits, that'd be great.
If I could just jump on that before Susan, sorry, I apologize. Um, the, one of the books that came out of that internship program is called Learning to Leave, and I got so excited after talking to you about it. I've got another copy. I will make sure you take a peek at it. That's right. Good.
Um, yes, I had questions about um, the, what was it? So the desirable need, so the chart, feasibility readiness, and capacity fit. Um, is that something the council um, discussed when they brought forward their two to three ideas? Or is that kind of a, you all have looked into it, like the admins looked into the feasibility?
Yeah, that that's a good question. No, so when we were putting, the last meeting, we were putting, more or less putting together the slides for this presentation. And so those subgroups discussed um, and came up with the two to three focus areas. And then and then we had at least one administrator in leading those subgroups to be able to make that determination about, well, is this ready, in theory, is this ready to go now if we wanted to implement it? Or would this require a fair amount more more research and and so forth? So that that's how that was determined, sort of that yes, no component.
Okay, thank you. Um, I was able to attend, actually, it might have been that that meeting in particular, and was um, impressed how the groups were split up and came back together. And I know um, Cara facilitated that, and I was really impressed.
Uh, I also was able to attend a different meeting. We kind of split it up, so we didn't have a quorum at one of the meetings, but um, able to attend and observe. And um, I sat in on the early childhood group um, and appreciated the conversation around a couple of different topics. One around um, the idea of um, extending uh, learning through the schools down into preschool. And one of the things that we that we noted, or that was noted by that group, was that um, currently kindergarten is not a requirement. So there's some steps that have to be taken um, perhaps before that happens. Um, but I also just really appreciated, there was um, one member of the committee, and I I don't remember her name, um, but I just remember her talking about um, the difficulty of the current school model for our young fives or some of the preschool programs that we have, because as a um, working mother, it's difficult for her to get her um, to to have her schedule fit around the the traditional school schedule. So um, there was definitely a lot of talk and a lot of perspectives that uh, were being considered. Um, and I thought that the the conversation, I know I learned from the conversation, so I appreciated that. Um, lastly, to those of you who are on um, the Strategic Council, um, I served on the strategic framework before uh, before becoming um, before deciding to run for the board. So I would encourage people who have maybe gotten a taste for um, for the ins and outs of the school uh, through that um, through the work around the Strategic Council to consider potentially getting involved, and maybe even as a running for board.
Um, I just have one quick comment. Today, I was reading actually an article, um, today, right now, the Mackinac Policy Conference is happening up north. And uh, one of the primary tenants or one of the primary things that is being discussed and advocated for at that conference that I read about, was that Carlin Gilchrist was, or Garland Gilchrist, was talking about uh, early childhood and the priority that the governor is making uh, to make that part of her budget. And so, I mean, it was, I'd read it today, it's being pushed like the whole thing. So I appreciate that we're trying to be ready for if that becomes a reality and now, you know, Celine families can realize those types of resources and that type of thing. Um, I think I read in that article that um, it's like a savings of like ten thousand dollars a year to families, right? So that is significant. It really helps um, you know, individuals who are struggling to find those resources and what have you, and and it appears to be a governor priority. So anyway, so I guess I'm just saying that and I appreciate our our forthright about, or forthrightness about it. I think that's a word. Thank you.
Such a word. Any, oh, Dr. Gold?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions. Um, I wondered why the SRO was mentioned specifically for the early childhood wins, like the School Resource Officer Security. I just wondered why that got grouped under early childhood.
Um, a discussion that we we've added in an SRO to the early, to the outside of, well, you had one in Pittsfield Township, and this building is more specifically the early childhood building. So now we have an SRO in this, well, with the city of Celine Buildings.
Okay.
Which which include Liberty.
And so when we're talking, I guess one question I had sort of more generally is that, like, when we're talking about the strategic moving forward, if something is listed in the sort of wins or positive column, does that mean that's something the district is seeing as a priority for funding moving forward when we're trying to decide, like, you know, when we have things listed as in the positive, like if you go back to the positives part, does that mean that that, we'd like to see that as a budgetary, a budget priority, budgetary, that's not a word, a budget priority moving forward? Is that kind of the purpose?
Well, that was, that was more or less the start to try to get to those two to three change proposals. So when we talk about prior priorities for funding, I think it would be more in line of, those two to three change proposals would be where we'd be trying to focus our finances. For example, if we were trying to bring the um, internship idea to light, then we would have to prioritize uh, potentially doing that and not doing something else. So um,
I see.
It's more geared towards the change proposals.
So then with the clubs um, question, is is that because clubs are a specific budgetary, like, is that because looking at how many clubs we have and offer has financial implications for the district? And it being more narrow and tailoring? Uh, it just seemed a little contradictory to me, because in one place, we're talking about like being more specific about how our clubs are chosen, and then in another place, it's like having more clubs for fifth to eighth graders. I just, I wasn't sure.
Well, I think, well, I I wasn't in that specific group, but I but I feel like I can speak for him in general, that we we just feel that now that Lori Dawson has taken on this role over the past couple of years, um, we're recognizing the need to have some um, standardization of how we begin clubs and organizations, because there are so many of them. It's not that we don't want to expand if if there's a need. And as we talk about the middle school level, we're thinking potentially there is, uh, but we also want to have a a process in mind. I mean, back in the day, it would be um, a student that has an idea, just goes to principal's state or or, well, whoever was the principal at the time in high school, and said, hey, I'd like to start this up, is there, you know, and then and then potentially it was it was approved regardless of whether um, you know, we already had that club in some capacity or, because we also also find sometimes the clubs overlap a fair amount. So it's more just a way to help better organize uh, the opportunities that kids have. It's not to try to not expand more of the process. It's not to try to not expand more of the process.
And then I was just wondering about advertising. Do we, are we going to, and sort of reach out, I guess, to families in terms of, are we looking at the surveys for what, what people like about the district and sort of guiding Jackie's outreach? Are we looking at particularly highlight, highlighting the positives that came out of this process? You know, special ed it goes sort of across all of these. But I, as I've said to you privately and tried to say to everyone, I think our special ed department merits a special kudos among all of our great educators in terms of bringing people to the district. So I was just wondering, like, is there like going to be a strategic framework for, specifically for that kind of reach out to bring people either back to the district or to the district to begin with? Is that something that the next group is going to look at or is that something Jackie's looking at or is there a committee or?
Yeah, I think it's, it's both. We would take the identified successes from the Strategic Council and need to embed that into our marketing strategy. But it's also, what are the great programs that we know exist now? And how are we marketing those and telling, we're, we're talking a lot about how do we tell the story of the district? I mean, what you ultimately want families to know is what's the overall experience like to come to Selene area schools? And we need to, we need to market and promote, to promote all those great things, like you said, our special education department, our CTE program, our athletic program, our music program. So it is important that we highlight, you know, all of those things. And so, yeah, as Jackie's taking all that information in, we are talking about marketing strategy. And another really good thing that Jackie is doing is she is networking out to other communications leads in, in local districts and beyond to find out, well, how are, how are they doing this and how are, so a really good job of networking in that regard.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, just to build upon the discussion with you and Lauren, if you wanted to look at expansion of clubs within the middle school, you could talk to our trap friends that were here tonight because it seems like they did a really nice job of expanding down into the middle school so they could be a possible prototype. If you could go back to the slide on the high school, on the positives?
Can you, yeah, put that back. Right there. Oh, no, no.
No.
The high school.
High school, yeah.
Back it up a little bit more. One more that, right there, the positives.
Yes. So just a reflection here that overall academics aren't listed as successes, successes or strengths. Like AP courses, diversity of courses. There were, there was a comment about, let's see. Maybe it wasn't on the slide, but that was just something that was sticking out as really missing. That when you think about a high school that's ranked as high as ours, that academics didn't come up and that is our focus because we are a school district. So that was just something that maybe we should think a little bit about as far as conversations with community members and why that didn't come up. The other question I had was with regards to consideration of K four and grades five through eight and then the high school. I forget what, what slide it was on, but I was just wondering the, the social emotional differences between grades five and grades eight are pretty staggering in maturity and physical developmental levels of those children. What would be the next steps in consideration of making a move like that in, in putting fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh graders and eighth graders together?
Well, I, I'd say right now we're, we're not looking at that, even if that's listed as a possible look at. Reconfiguration is always a possibility, but right now, we're currently looking at that for our early childhood programs, not specifically this. Even though it's, it was mentioned in the group.
Yeah, because it, it did list it. And if we can find the slide, I thought it was a yes that it could be feasible, but.
Well, that, that's feasible, but, but.
Yeah, it's partially, yeah.
Right, lumped in with a bunch of other things as it relates to transitions. Again, this slide was about transitions. By doing that, in theory, there'd be one less transition. That, that's what they're getting at. But I, I, I'm, I'm here to say that we're not in a position to move forward with that right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And these were strictly ideas that came up within the groups, right?
Right. Right. And to clarify on that point, we did talk to the groups over and over again that we're taking feedback and we are going to continue talking about the possible implementation of these. But that, you know, it's not some guarantee that all of these are going to happen. And everybody, everybody understood that, at least to my knowledge in the group.
Well, I just want to say thank you to you and also to those in the audience. There may be one or two attendees tonight who were also on, I see you, I see you, who are on that district council. Could you just wave for a second and so we, you can accept our thanks. Oh, yay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your efforts. I know it was a lot of work and I know you treated it extraordinarily seriously. And thank you so much for, for your time and your service to the school district. We are now at the administration board updates part. I believe you start.
Yeah, I do not have any comments tonight. Thank you.
It was a lot up front, a lot of accolades up front.
We can work our way from one end to the other. We'll start with our student though. Thank you, sir.
I first want to say thank you to President McVeigh, Dr. Latch and Principal Stager for selecting me and Caroline for, to be those student reps for this year. It's been a wonderful and experience to learn a lot about how school runs behind the scenes with all the board does, gain a lot of experience from the board and learned a lot from each and every one of you guys on the board. And thank you so much for that. And Caroline told me to tell you guys thank you as well. She really liked this opportunity and we are thankful for it. And we're looking forward to who's going to be the next school board rep. And then for updates, we got, the seniors are out, so that's super fun, super cool. But for everyone else, keep going strong, finish with your, with your tests and all, everything. And for sports, they're coming to playoffs. So it's be super cool to see what they do. And thank you all again for this amazing opportunity. It was, it was a fun school year.
We will be, thank you Mateo, thank you again. I appreciate you mentioning that. We will be interviewing candidates on Thursday, Dr. Stager, Mrs. Stager and I, we, we've got it all lined up. We're ready to go. We've got a great group and one of them, or maybe two, will be coming here to the board table. Thank you. And I'm sure you'll be able to count on your insights as well. I, I have your email and I'm just going to share it. Thank you. We'll start with Tim because Ben Goodman says it's easier that way.
Okay, so I want to give a shout out to the Selene area school staff for their hard work this year. Thank you. Over the past few months, we've seen many impactful staff members moving into retirement. You will be missed. Enjoy your retirement. I also want to congratulate all of our seniors in the chapter of their life that is closing, but many more amazing chapters are to be written. Special thanks to Carolyn and Mateo for dedicating your Thursday nights, or Tuesday nights to us for the district. And to all the seniors that will be heading into the military after graduation, thank you for your service and commitment to this country. And then I don't think, if, I might come back to this later. I, I have something else, but I'm, I'm not, just not sure what, okay, I'm just going to do it. So, okay. Yeah. So lastly, a lot has been going on over the past few months and even weeks, not even solely related to the nationalized email. I wasn't going to be the one that wants to bring this up, I guess, but I am, so. Okay, so first I wanted to say I've read some things that were absolutely appalling and had no business being written. Some directed at staff, some directed towards community members. Our staff should not have to endure these kinds of messages, nor should anyone have to be subject to these types of messages. And we need to do better. The email, I was disappointed to see it, but not shocked. I believe we need to do things differently. The flame of unrest within our community and on the district's direction has been fueled by community members feeling like their voices have been disregarded. We see this with parents moving kids to other schooling options. We as a district have become hypersensitive to all differences, which is, I believe, only causes harm and separation for our children. These things can't happen when we elevate committees by appointed community members that don't fully represent our entire community to a position of such influence. We as a board have also heard a lot regarding the listening sessions. We await the report to the board. But the, but from emails that I have seen, sad, the sad truth is diversity sometimes does not get an invitation to the room of inclusion. I understand some of these, some people may not agree with my thoughts or views. That's diversity. I truly want a district that includes all, a district that doesn't want to create interpreters or chaos, but compassionate and understanding for our differences. A district that stands for truth, a district that promotes excellence and sacrifice for our fellow countrymates that have endured, that our fellow countrymates have endured to right the past wrongs. A district that understands our lane when it comes to educating these precious children that parents entrust to us. We all don't have to agree on how we get there, but we should all agree in kindness. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Brad?
On that, we can very much agree. So first of all, I want to say congratulations to our seniors and students and staff members. Like congratulations on your grad, your impending graduation. We'll be excited to see you guys on Sunday night at the football field. And we'll toss, you'll toss caps and make us, make your parents proud and all of it. And it's exciting time. And you should be congratulated for that and all the seniors. Our staff is outstanding and you're right, they, they do not deserve to adhere some of the, or endure some of the language and some of the things that were, were said on a, from a national media perspective where you, you don't even really know us, right? You know, and it's, it's easy from afar to, to toss insults and to, to say things behind a keyboard. And I guess what I would say is I know that our staff is outstanding. I know our staff is extraordinary. And I know that our students and our, our culture is trying to reflect that. I want to say very much so that I would like to give my absolute support out loud here to the work of Cara Davis and to the work of Ryan Kerr. They're doing their job, right? We passed policy and we did things that, this is their job. And the reality is that the policy says that we're going to promote an inclusive environment for all students and we're going to try to do that. And that means that when that, we have a student who comes to visit any of our school buildings or any of our school classrooms or anything whatsoever, that, that student knows that there's a place for them. And that is okay with me. In fact, it's more than okay with me. I will stand here and I will support that until I can't anymore. Now, I'm not perfect about it. I'm not, but at the same time, and I, I do think we need to, to listen to each other. And I do think we need to work together. And I do think we need to listen to those who feel differently from ourselves. Just so if anything, so we can learn from one another and we can try to, to build those, those consensus. Because I think what happens is when we stop listening to each other, we stop caring about each other and then we stop trying for each other. And I don't want to do that. Okay? And, and that includes people who see the world differently from myself. At the same time, I want to protect that student who, who comes to our classrooms, comes to our, our places and says, what about me? Where do I fit? What do I do? And so for me, I think Cara tried to do that. And I know your heart was that. And I'm sorry that that email was, was shared and put all over. And I'm sorry to, to you specifically, I know, but I, I just, that was a very difficult week, I'm sure for you. And I want you to know how much I care about you, how much I appreciate you, how much I see your desire to lead. And, and it, it meant a lot to me. So anyway, so, so that is that. And I, I think that's all I'm going to say for tonight, but thank you.
All right. So building on, building on all of that, I will also say congratulations to all of the graduates. With graduation pen, coming up here on Sunday, I'm looking forward to celebrating with all of you and hearing about all of your next steps, whether it be in college, career or military. I know some people started some of those steps today after finishing, finishing classes on Friday. So congratulations to, to all of those graduates and to each of the people who supported them along the way. So teachers, staff and family, community members, et cetera. We often say it takes the village and it, and it really does. So congratulations to everyone on this accomplishment. I also wanted to, I also wanted to mention the, I guess, the notable news event last, last week. And I want to start by also giving my full endorsement and support to Cara Davis especially and to Ryan Kerr. I've heard, we, we've heard throughout the last week or so, support for, for both of you and the roles that you serve. And I know that you are there for a purpose. And I know that many of our community members appreciate the, the work and the efforts and the communication that you provide to create inclusive environments for all of our students. I think what it boils down to is we are a public institution and therefore we are in service to all students. And we need to create an environment that is inclusive to all students. And I think the purpose of, I believe, the purpose of the listening sessions and also our email, Dr. Latch's availability, the availability both of Cara and Ryan and a dozen others serves as a mechanism for those opportunities for, for listening. So those listening sessions are meant to be an opportunity for people to, to highlight areas that maybe they don't see as being the most inclusive. Because as I've said before, I don't think that our work around diversity, equity and inclusion and belonging is ever complete. I think it's ever evolving and it's, it's something that we need to constantly strive to, to better in service of the students that we are currently serving. And we know that the students that we currently serve evolve daily. So I just wanted to also mention that while Weber Bliss is a field trip that our students attend, it is an extension of Selene area schools. It is housed on the Celine property. The curriculum that is taught at those field trips is, has been curated or written by Selene area schools educators. And so as an extension of Selene area schools, our policies and our procedures should extend to those areas. And I, I just, as I was thinking about this and discussing it with my family, because my, my kids are soon to be graduates. Often we have these discussions at our tables and we learn from one another. But one of the things that we talked about a little bit at our household was how there is relevance in historical context. And we can talk about maybe practices that existed in history, but it doesn't mean that we continue those practices that could be harmful. So we talked about how there might, may be other groups who would also have not been historically welcomed or a part of a school like Weber Bliss 50, 60, 70 years ago. And how we have changed our practices to reflect that. One of the things that came up was that when my oldest was younger, kindergarten used to do a powwow. And it was an opportunity for learning students. The intent was that students were learning about indigenous people. However, it was cultural appropriation and it took some educators who realized that through diversity, equity and inclusion training. They realized this, they vocalized this and they worked to create change and that practice no longer continues. So I, I just mentioned all of this because those conversations that were happening at my household, were happening at a wedding that I was at on Saturday, have been happening around our community are important for us to have. And I think the thing that I keep coming back to is this work is never done. We need to continue to learn. We need to continue to listen. And we need to continue to make changes that promote belonging and inclusivity for all of our kids. So thank you to Cara. Thank you to Ryan. Thank you to Dr. Latch and to everyone who supported them.
I guess I'll speak in order and then not be the anchor leg. I, I don't have a great deal to say tonight. As a board president, you might imagine, I received all the emails, all the Facebook posts I go through. I've done a lot of scrolling. And I must, and even receive the occasional phone call from some interesting parties. And I just want to say, I'm still processing. And I just want to say, I'm still processing, I am processing and having difficulty dealing with some of it, as, as Tim alluded to at the beginning, some of the posts that were written were just, and, and these are things that the, beyond, beyond that. And these are things the public doesn't see and I just wanted to let you know, we, we took the full brunt, we get it and, and I just want to say my board colleagues tonight are speaking far more articulately than I can, for sure. But to be as simple as possible, I would rather have Cara Davis in my corner, supporting my kids regarding, than anyone else in the world. So Cara, thank you so much and I'll let the rest of the board speak.
So first of all, I just want to start off with saying congratulations to Mateo and Caroline and thinking about our, our table up here and our little board family. Very proud of you both and can't wait to congratulate her in person as well. But I also want to acknowledge Tim and Jenny because it is very, very hard to be a parent any day of the week. And I, like, I'm gonna, oh, I'm gonna get teary eyed, I can't, I know, I'm so proud of you, but I'm bringing Kleenex on Sunday. I, I haven't been there yet, so I can't imagine what you're feeling this week, so I'm thinking of you all this weekend as well, as our wonderful, wonderful graduates. Thank you to my board colleagues who engaged in some crucial conversations up here. It's incredibly important to respect diversity of opinion and to have conversations verbally and in person. That's how we make bridges to civility and bridge those gaps. Within the past week, I guess it is, or so, that week went fast, I got to Chaperone Prom and I got to see some students having a lot of fun, got to stand in line with them and hear about the house parties. I'm like, "Stop talking to me about this." I totally acknowledge that, you know, folks will, will review the logistics of the evening, but I can tell you from actually being there that the, the students were having a good time. And then just today, I was at Woodland Meadows because I teach, I think it was my seventh or eighth year of teaching junior achievement, so I team teach two classes and I got to work with the students and I was so, once again, second grade, so incredibly impressed with their little high-performing teams. They did this task and they built pizzas and they learned about cooperation and they already had cooperation because, you know, the, the two teams that tied for first place with making eight pizzas successfully, I had them come up to the front of the class and I said, "Okay, we're gonna do what we do in college. We're gonna debrief and look for success and talk about best practices so we can cascade that down within the classroom." And I said, "Okay, were, did you have, at any time, did you have differences of opinion? Did you know, oh, we should do it this way?" And, and they all were respectful of each other, may I say, kinder than necessary. And I was so impressed with all of them. To that end, I think that others in the community and in our nation and quite frankly, our world can do a better job. And if the second graders can get it, I think that we can get it as well. I don't need to go through what everybody else said, but I was traveling for work and out of the country this week and so I felt, I felt a little remote reading everything while I was over there and quite honestly horrified by some of the emails, comments on social media. In a, in a few veins, there were a few different things going on. I wanted to just, just call out Cara and say thank you for all of the work and I fully support you. I wanted to call out Steve and say thank you for all of your work and I fully support you. I wanted to call out our prom planning committee and our junior council, students who were involved in that and took a real hit unfair. They are under eighteen and they are children. I see you and I fully support you. And our docents at the one-room schoolhouse, our volunteers, thank you for, for working and creating a historical experience for our students. I think those groups had a lot of unnecessary hate, threats, and terrible, terrible things said about them. And I, I don't think that's right. I'm gonna take a deep breath because I want to leave on a positive note because I really, I really do think that positive leadership is the best. Teresa Stager, are you still in the room? I can't see you. There you are. So while I was away, out of the country and all this is going on, four days ago, our proud principal of Celine High School, I'm, I'm assuming this was you, it looks like your writing style, I'm assuming this was you, four days ago, wrote this post on social media and it really helped me to just put it in perspective. She said today, "Now I'm gonna cry. Today at 10:18 a.m., the class of 2024 were dismissed for the last time as a student at Celine High School. After your breakfast, as you leave the building, be sure to pick up your Celine graduate on sign. They will be available at both doors as you head to your vehicles. Throughout your journey at Celine High School, you have proven yourselves to be a very special group of individuals. Your resilience, determination, and unwavering spirit have inspired us all. Truth. From September 2020 to this very moment, you have left an irreplaceable mark on our school community. As you exit your classroom and enter the, into the hallway, be sure to say goodbye and thank the staff here at SHS for their work over your four years. On behalf of the entire faculty, staff, and student body, I thank you for allowing us to be part of your journey. It has been an honor and a privilege to watch you grow, learn, and flourish. We are confident that you will go on to achieve greatness in all that you do. Your legacy will continue to inspire future generations. Your impact will be felt long after you leave and you will forever be a part of the Celine family. We hope your journey that begins now is as extraordinary as you are. Enjoy your last morning at SHS as we look forward to honoring the class of 2024 on June 2nd. Stay safe, stay in touch, and go Hornets." That is who is teaching your kids. That is the culture of Celine Area Schools. And while I respect the diversity of opinion, please know that the people who are educating your children read these emails that we get, they read social media posts, they hear what's happening in the, in the school district. And this is the culture that we have in our buildings and I'm very, very proud of it.
So I also taught my first junior achievement program this year and it was a very powerful program and the, the students and even parents came up to me after the program and said that it was a hit with the kids. So I was super excited receiving little thank you notes from, from the students and kind of summing up what they, they had learned and had appreciated. So that was a cool experience. I want, I don't think this is mentioned tonight, the Sex Ed Advisory Board Public Hearing, where, their first public hearing, is Monday, June 10th at 6:00 p.m. in the Liberty Board Room. That has been posted publicly under these board meetings and special meetings, so you can get information there. I'm one of the board reps and so is trustee Gold and I, I've personally been impressed by the work that the committee has done and all that's gone into looking at a variety of programs. And this is for fourth, specifically fourth through eighth, eighth grade right now and what will be recommended. And so they looked at, you know, a number of programs, got it down to two, and really did some in-depth, you know, looking, looking at the differences and have, are now recommending something. So I'm super excited about that. Our current curriculum is very, 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 very old. And so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, hopefully we will move forward with the hearings, all hearings and that it'll come to the board for action at some point this year. So Pride Month is in June and I'm, I'm bringing this up because June is Saturday and I won't see you at the next board meeting before then, before school lets out. I'm really looking forward to the district and schools celebrating our LGBTQ plus staff, students, and families who are part of this community. Also, the Saturday, June 1st at 1:00 p.m., the annual Pride Flag Raising Ceremony will be at Celine City Hall. So I invite the community to come out and just come, come as a community. It's been pretty good attendance over the years and it's good to see that support. And then kind of a statement to, to what we were seeing in the news. I have a statement, but it, it's hard not to listen to this acknowledgement of hate and bigotry that our, our staff member experienced. And I want to thank her, I, you know, saw her at a meeting and she came up to me and I asked how she was doing and she told me that she was sorry because she knows that like me and other LGBTQ children and, and families go through possibly on a daily basis and, and so thank you for acknowledging that. That meant a lot. Okay, my statement. "I will not tolerate hate in our schools and community. I will not tolerate hate and bigotry against our students and staff and I hope that you will stand with me. In order to make SAS feel welcoming and safe for all students, our board policies must be fully implemented and with consistency and transparency. Everyone has to be made aware of these procedures and must be held accountable when policies are not followed and violations occur. We have to address bullying and harassment at every level in this district and I'm gonna say, including our wider community. It is not enough to deal with serious systemic issues in this district on a case-by-case basis. We cannot be reactionary when our board policies and law requires the district to be proactive and not reactionary. While there has been great improvement since I was elected in 2018, with the creation and adoption of the DEI Advisory Committee Policy and the transgender and non-binary students policy, it will never be enough unless we are committed 100% to implementing these policies. While the trans policy was passed in 2021, we are only now, only now seeing action being taken. And I appreciate that our administrators have, you know, start, started to do that. And so my, my ask is, I didn't finish my statement, but my ask is to, we can't be shy about this, this is our policies. And I want, you know, our administration to be proud of what the board is proud of and what, what we passed unanimously and make sure that, you know, that, that we are 100% behind our teachers and staff who, you know, want to do this work and, you know, celebrate Pride Month next week. So yes, that needs to happen. I appreciate that, that has started to happen. I just want you all to push forward and don't let the haters and bigots and Moms for Liberty and Libs of TikTok and all of those people put our district down. We're better than that.
So I will echo everyone in congratulating the seniors and the families of the seniors graduating. Congratulations to everyone moving up in the world, from the littlest preschoolers who are gonna start kindergarten in the fall, to our kids getting clapped out, which was always one of my favorite things at the elementary level, to the kids, you know, moving up into the middle school and the high school. As Dr. Latch said, transitions are hard, but they're also exciting. And so congratulations to everyone who's, you know, reaching a milestone. The highlight of the last few weeks in Celine Area Schools for me was going to see our band and orchestra play together. It just, no matter how many times I watch them play, it's just really a fantastic thing to see and in such a big place. It's really neat to see like the seniors from specific groups called out, so seeing the seniors who've been in band or orchestra all four years and the relationship they form with the teachers. I just think when we look at things like mental health in our kids, that is a really important that they find their place in the world. And I, my wish for us is for all the students to find their place, whether that's in peer-to-peer or Gay Straight Lions or, you know, band, there's, I, what I hope is that there's some smaller place within these bigger schools for everyone. My, I was out of town this weekend, but my family attended the Memorial Day Parade where our marching band performed and I'm sure other students performed too, but you know, I only hear about what my kids do from the family, so I'm sorry. That's who I heard about. But I did hear about my moral, moral speech from my kids and my spouse and, you know, he, he was really, my spouse was impressed by the highlighting of the sacrifices made, you know, by those who sacrificed for this country and for our absolute right to come to a board meeting and complain to elected officials without fearing for our jobs and to speak up and write, criticize the government of which we, I guess, are. And so I fully support that right that we have as Americans. But as parents, and this goes, and community members, and this goes beyond, this goes beyond the people I agree with politically. So certainly there's people I agree with politically who I disagree with how we are conducting ourselves as parents and role models in the community. So criticize us, criticize government, criticize the way the school is doing things, but let's do it in a way that is constructive and leads with some grace and that we would want our kids to look at what we have to say and write on social media and think, "Okay, like that's how I should talk to one of my friends when I disagree with them on something." So, you know, I think we should all try to behave in a way where our kids could admire the way we move forward. And the fact of it is, is that even if we parents and community members don't always agree with each other, our kids are still going to go and sit in the same classrooms. And I think that's really what diversity, equity, and inclusion is about, is that the kids are going to go in and talk to each other and they're going to hear what you say at home about their neighbors and friends. And so we all just need to remember, and this includes me, like how we are speaking about the others in our community. And so like, just to finish up, as my kids were studying this week, my high school son was learning about how to evaluate sources. And I think that's really important and I think it's important on both sides, frankly, of the political divide because I think there is some nuance in how we talk about DEI efforts that often gets lost in these discussions because people kind of separate into their ends. And I don't think we have the final answer on which pieces of DEI education are going to be the most productive for our families and our students going forward and which pieces aren't going to perhaps look less effective in 20 years. You know, I think you have to have a certain degree of humiliate, humility when you're talking about how we, how we teach kids. But what I do know is there's better ways to criticize it and to be constructive than what went on this week and what has gone on in past weeks, frankly. And so I hope that we can find those better ways moving forward.
I just, I want to, I know that we've probably forgotten a lot of people, but I also want to just acknowledge that Jackie had quite a week and responded with thoroughness and honesty and really- and really was able to dispel some of the misinformation that was out there. So, thank you for your work communicating with individuals and with the media.
Thank you, Jenny. I would like to move to the consent agenda, please. Consent agenda is listed in this agenda and will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requested any one or all be considered individually. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed, please.
So moved, Gerbi.
Gerbi.
Support, Stabin.
Gerbi and Stabin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Oh, items on the next agenda, sir?
Yeah, the June meeting, only one meeting for June, so that'll be budget hearing. Also, we have scheduled reports of a tech department update, wellness committee update, and Foundation for Celine Area Schools annual update.
So, just a quick note on that, the budget hearing is scheduled for 6:00 PM, that's right. So, it's going to be early. And we will be moving into a closed session that evening for a superintendent evaluation quarterly. Or, that's right, I was talking about moving it a little later because that agenda was getting a little crowded. So, we'll talk. We'll talk. Thank you. We have, now is the time for a public comment. Because we didn't have one at the beginning, I'm just going to restate the rules of the road. "A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion," oh, sorry, that's us. "This participation portion is offered at the end of the meeting just to allow for any comments that you might have to share. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. Public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. And for those of you who are new to this, we don't respond. We take note, but we don't respond to your comments, just so you know. Thank you." Oh, so, the list. Ryan Kerr is first up, and on deck is Charlie Hurst. Hey, Charlie. Bonjour.
Hello. Oh, sorry.
You have, she'll be watching the time closely.
I've timed this out. I feel pretty good about it, so. Thank you.
And I'm going to make an annoying noise.
Oh, great. My name is Ryan Kerr. I am the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Specialist for Celine Area Schools. I am speaking tonight as a representative of the district's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. The DEIAC was established in April of 2021 and has worked diligently over the last few years to help guide the district's equity agenda in its advisory capacity to the school board. Our committee consists of parents, teachers, administrators, board members, and most importantly, students. These representatives of our community work tirelessly to support the diverse groups and families in Celine while creating spaces where all students feel seen and celebrated. I would like to read the district's equity statement as a reminder of our shared committed values towards representation and visibility of all of the students and families that live in our community who help to make it the dynamic and thriving place that it is. "Celine Area Schools supports students in becoming ethical and responsible citizens. Students demonstrate this attribute when they see beyond themselves to the needs of others, contribute to their community, promote social justice, take responsibility for the environment, and demonstrate respect, empathy, and compassion. SAS embraces diversity and inclusion as it strives to provide a variety of perspectives for students to consider. All students in SAS should be able to see themselves in the curriculum we offer. Further, all students should be able to reflect and consider alternative viewpoints that exist within our society. In order to provide this, the district encourages the use of resources from different backgrounds and topics. In short, it is clear that we value in Celine Area Schools, or that it is a clear value of Celine Area Schools to embrace the diversity that thrives within our community. We, the members of the DEIAC, are therefore saddened by negative responses to the district's diversity and inclusion efforts and reject the open hostilities that have been directed towards those who would seek to build community across our differences. Instead, we affirm the work that is being done daily in this district to prepare students for success by providing equitable education and safe, inclusive communities, all while upholding standards of academic excellence and rigor. We support and celebrate the teachers, administrators, and staff members who do this work daily to improve our schools and in the process, our community. Furthermore, we acknowledge that those administrators, teachers, and staff members who engage in this work do so under the guidance of school policies which were crafted around the needs and desires of this community in compliance with state and federal laws. The work done in this domain is responsive to the communities that we serve, and we take great pride in our efforts within Celine Area Schools to build affinities around the diverse needs of all of our students. We are thankful for those who continue to openly support and engage in this work and look forward to continued strides that are critical to the longevity and health of our students, their families, and our community as a whole. Thank you."
Ryan Kerr, the expressions of excitement you saw were because of your impeccable timing.
And wonderful words.
Well, I'm not allowed to talk about that. Charlie Hurst, and on deck is Chris Budnick. Thank you.
I'm Charlie Hurst. My pronouns are they/them. I'm non-binary, and I'm queer. My family has lived in the district for two years, and during that time, I have served on the DEIAC. And I want to, I'm speaking just as a parent, but I want to thank SAS for the opportunity to speak at this meeting, to participate on the DEIAC, and also the listening sessions, those open houses. I attended two of them, and I thought that they were wonderful experiences. I'm sorry that other people had different experiences, but I had a very positive experience, and I look forward to more of those opportunities in the future. Last year on the DEIAC, I did make a recommendation to use gender-neutral language. When I submitted that recommendation, I had no idea that my child was non-binary. And this year at Heritage, I saw my child really, like, lose all of the sunshine that they had, you know, throughout their life. And we didn't understand why they had withered into themselves. And then, we were getting some really scary phone calls from the school about how my child's mental health was doing. We got therapy, and they have felt empowered now to be who they are. And they have that light back that they had when they were, you know, a really little child before all of this concept of gender is kind of forced into a binary. And in our household, we were really affirming, but still, they had trouble coming out because they were afraid. But the school has been super supportive. They're now empowered. They want to start a GSA at Heritage. They have two other students who are helping to found this club at the school. I'm very proud of them. And as was mentioned earlier, June is Pride Month. And I want everyone in Celine to be looking good for Pride Month. So, I have some pins because I would like to recognize your efforts in DEI. And I want to make sure you're all got your little pins for Pride Month.
While you're giving those out, Susan, what time is the flag raising on Saturday, the 1st?
I believe I said 1:00 PM.
A little later. Thank you. Than the last year, it was 12 or something. It was hot. All right. Thank you. Have you reached the end of your, have you reached the end of your talk? Charlie?
Okay, second.
Thank you. Chris Budnick, followed by Ben Goodman. Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. In today's digital age, the sheer volume of information at our fingertips is unprecedented. A single post can garner a million views in a blink of an eye. But let me remind you, the popularity does not equate to truth. Disinformation has never been more prevalent, and our ability to process, validate, and understand the vast sea of data is limited by our human nature. We often find ourselves reacting emotionally, relying on hearsay, accepting information that aligns with the preconceived notions. It's easier, more convenient, often more comforting. Yet, this approach is fraught with danger. Social media is awash with triggering messages, phenomenon that is not going away. In fact, it's here to stay. The algorithms are designed to keep us engaged, feeding us our content and resonates with our desires and our emotional triggers. I founded a social media platform in 2020, and through extensive research, we uncovered the profound impacts of the digital interactions, or, I'm sorry, the impacts of digital interactions on our society. Today, I want to emphasize a crucial point. We, the people, are often our own worst enemies. Our desires, our reactions, our posts, all of these manipulated by the platforms we use. If we don't take a step back and realize that our actions today shape the future of our children, we risk causing irreverible harm. Think about the impacts of a single post. A person's life can forever be changed by what we share and say online. Supportive gaslighting, public shaming, casual destructions of someone's reputation are all too real. Today, it's a stranger, but tomorrow, it could be your own child. The digital age does not discriminate. This is a friendly reminder. We are all learning every day. The words we write, the pictures we share, the opinions we post, they can have life-altering consequences. For those who choose to disregard this responsibility, understand that your actions set an example for the next generation. Your children are watching and learning from you. One day, they will not be remembered as patriots or revolutionaries, but as individuals shaped by the examples we set. So, let us be mindful. Let us strive for a future where digital interactions build each other up rather than tear each other down. Remember, with great power comes great responsibility, and together, we can make social media a positive tool for change. In closing, I would like to thank Celine School's staff and faculty for dedicating their lives to our children. It takes a special person to be an educator. May these situations build calluses and not shade your light that our kids feed off of every single day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Ben Goodman, followed by Sarah Fabian.
Hi, my name is Ben Goodman. I have two kids in the district with IEPs, receiving special education services. On May 7th, I attended the listening session with Dr. Lott and Mr. Ryan Kerr. That was the first listening session I've ever been able to attend, and ironically enough, it's going to be the last one I ever attend. I was not treated fairly that night. I left that evening feeling uncomfortable and validated and silenced, as did many other people that attended that meeting that night, to talk about disabilities, not stuff that was mentioned in other listening sessions. The very next day, I complained to Dr. Lott, Mr. Musson, as well as members of the Special Ed Advisory Council. Apparently, that was the shot that blew up the powder keg because I've been told by other parents that people have been complaining all week about the email that Mr. Musson sent out about meeting with us privately and even setting up times for us to meet with Dr. Lott to talk about kids with disabilities. That's it. Kind of ironic, considering there were many in that listening session who didn't get many opportunities to speak. Why? Because we had two people suck the oxygen out of the room. One of those is related to one of you on this board. Seven days later, on May 14th, I heard this same board member describe what was listed in those listening sessions. Was any of this privacy respected? No, it was not. That was information that Dr. Lott is going to share any June or July meeting. How did you find out about it? That's right, your spouse was there. I was crushed that evening.
Ben, I appreciate it. It's turning into an attack on a board member.
Okay, I apologize. I will stop right there with that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
It was Dr. Lott that needs to be presenting this material. And special education parents, we have rights to privacy. We have rights to be respected. And in DEI, we've been kicked down the totem pole. We really have. I don't feel welcome at all attending these sessions anymore as a parent of two kids with disabilities. Like, it shouldn't matter what my kid's skin color is. It shouldn't matter, you know, where we fit in in this DI puzzle. They have disabilities. They belong here. They have something called an IEP, and they are supported by IDEA. We matter. Our kids matter. And that night, you took so much from us in that listening session, and we just don't feel welcome here by people in this community, not by the schools. Let me tell you, Mr. Musson, Dr. Lott, Ms. Getner, everybody who's been attacked in this district lately has really supported us. And at this time, we really need your board support. We need you to talk to this board member and this people in the community and let them know that we deserved a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Fabian, followed by Heather Finch.
So, I am the parent of two kids who attend Harvest. And I was a chaperone a few weeks ago in my son's third-grade trip to the one-room schoolhouse. And I wanted to share my experience in relation to the email from Kara Davis that made national headlines last week. Without knowing anything about Davis's email or the ensuing controversy, I was talking to a friend early last week about how strange some of the things I witnessed were on this field trip. I was surprised to see gender stereotyping that went on during this field trip from the moment it began as there are definitely children in our schools, including in my son's class, who are gender non-conforming. The very first thing the docents did on this trip was divide students by gender and then proceed to treat them differently based on this. Over the years, my kids have been in Celine schools. I've noticed that teachers use terminology like students, friends, kindergarteners to address students. So, this really stood out to me. Another parent on the field trip turned to me and my son's teacher commenting about this, and our children's teacher indicated that this was not something they were supposed to do. One of the highlights of the visit for the kids was getting to see all of the outdated forms of punishment from that time period. During one of these lessons, a docent removed the bonnet of a female student with her permission and placed it on one of the male student's heads while everyone laughed. This same docent also pretended to hit a different child with an imaginary switch and made yet another child stand on his tiptoes with his nose to the chalkboard. As Davis says in her message, "There are ways to teach about this time period without enacting the very things that we've learned from and moved on from. If a practice alienates some of our kids, we should no longer do it. Period." Talking about historical practices and physically recreating them are two very different things, and kids can learn important lessons without having to physically experience them, especially when those things can be harmful. I'm grateful that these things no longer happen in our classrooms, and field trips are extensions of that learning. So, I just wanted to publicly thank Kara Davis for so eloquently communicating the values of our district and for ensuring that children in our schools do not feel excluded or alienated during their educational experiences. Thank you.
Heather R. Finch, and on deck is Amy Good.
Hello. My name's Heather Finch. I wanted to cover a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to pile on the support for Kara Davis. I've worked with her for quite a while now on the DEIAC and can say that she has been nothing but supportive and constantly striving towards learning and doing better and putting the work in for DEI and for all of our students every day. In regards to the one-room schoolhouse specifically, I wanted to call out what an opportunity there is there. As I think a lot of you know, I have a child who has some pretty severe special needs, autism specifically, who gets very overstimulated and overwhelmed, especially in new situations. And when he went there, that was a huge trigger for him and a big meltdown. It was a lot because there just wasn't proper preparation put into that. It was a lot because there just wasn't proper preparation put into that for him, and there wasn't proper support for him when he went there. And so there's just a big opportunity there for how can we help make sure that that is a place that is supportive for all kids, field trips in general. It's something we can always do better with for our special education students who were having a more of a gen ed setting. And then I just also want to call out Ms. Julie Volknor, who came up here earlier, what a humongous win that is for Saline Area Schools to have that hire. You guys could not have a better head of special education than Julie Volknor, so congratulations on that. I am incredibly sad to have her leaving as the head principal at Progress Park where my son is. So I am doubly sad and thrilled for this move, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And on deck, of course, Tiffany Alexander.
Hi, everyone, I'm going to keep this short, because I lost my voice this weekend at volleyball, so I'm going to do my best. First of all, I just want to thank you all for giving us the chance to speak, and I love having this opportunity to look every one of you in the eye. It's really important for me to tell you that I appreciate every single one of you. I know personally what you guys do for our students, I know that you fight for them, I know some of the negative that you get and that you hear and feel for all of our students. You guys are on the receiving end of a lot of stuff, and we don't see all of that or hear all of that, but I want you to know that we do feel and we're supporting you, we're behind you, and we appreciate everything you do. I want to appreciate, I want to say thank you for supporting all of our students. Thank you for the policies that we have in place, thank you for fighting for them, and thank you for making them feel welcome and safe in our district. Quickly, I just want to say thank you also for giving us the opportunity with the district's Strategic Council. That was a really interesting experience, and I loved that we had so many different, we had community members, staff, students, people who had kids in the district, people who didn't have kids in the district. So I thought that was really interesting to get all of the different perspectives of those people, and then also listening to the recommendations that we make. So, thank you all very much, and a special thank you to our wonderful staff.
Thank you, Amy Good.
First, I want to say to Kara Davis, I am so sorry what happened to you. That is not supposed to happen to anybody under any circumstances, ever. It is utterly reprehensible behavior. It doesn't matter what your positions are, nobody's supposed to be treated that way. Number one. Number two. I want to say, Ryan, you are such a welcome addition. I am incredibly grateful for his presence. Then I want to say, I'm, first of all, I want to thank all the board members who chose to congratulate every single senior, regardless to what it is that they're doing. I think that's pretty cool, because it doesn't really matter, they've reached a milestone, and that's huge. I also want to say, I was kind of relieved to see people condemn what has happened, because in the past, we have asked for that. We have asked to condemn what has happened, and that is something that has been ignored, and when that's ignored, it feeds. Because every time it's ignored, it says it's acceptable, we can continue to do this, and we can get nastier and uglier and louder, because no one's going to say anything. So I was really happy to hear so many people speak so eloquently about it. We're not allowed to attack anybody, but I do believe we're allowed to say thank you. Trustee Gerby, I thought what you said was particularly powerful. Now I'd like to ask you to, if you're so inclined, to engage in a bit of an exercise with me. I'd like you to pick any child that you love and care about, anyone, and I'd like you to see their face, and I'd like you to understand that some of these kids walk in this building every day, and that is how they feel, every day. I don't want you to see some random student, I want you to see a child you love. When you hear us bang our fists and yell and scream and beg and plead and demand, it's because some of us are going home to those students that make themselves as small in that building as they can, who hide in the tiniest and darkest of corners, who are afraid to use the bathroom or the locker room, some who cannot be brought to board meetings because you know what they're going to hear, how, well, we have community members who are leaving the district because you exist, how we need diversity of thought, that you are a sin, or that your family is a sin. These are children, and they have to know that that's how some of the community members that they live with feel about them. They have to know that some of the people inside of their own school buildings, some of their own classmates, will stage a protest, because that's what their parents have told them to do.
Thank you, too.
Oh, is that it?
Sorry, I didn't give you the yellow again, because I was listening.
Okay, can I just, thank you. So I just ask you to really think, please, when you hear us asking you for these things, we're not asking you because it's a simple question about guidelines or any of that, it's because these children are living this every single day. That's what this is about.
Thank you. The next meeting of the Board of Education will be held June 11th at 6:30 PM preceded by the budget hearing at 6:00 PM, but there will also be a special meeting on June 10th for the SEAB, the Sex Education Advisory Board hearing. Thank you very much. And I guess I get to tap this. Oh, did I miss, oh, there's another page, there's another page. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular.
So moves, Stebbin.
Stebbin. Miller supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.